Regular scheduled work session to order and regular council meeting to order. We combined both meetings this year since the holiday fell on the, February day fell on the Monday morning. Before we get started, let's rise for a moment. Let's remember all of those who lost their lives during nine-eleven. It's amazing that it's been sixteen years since that tragedy. And also, let's remember the people in Texas and in Florida that's dealing with floods and hurricanes and everything else. So, let's have a moment of silence. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, before we get started, I know Mrs. Cullen is not here this evening. I just want to have everybody, she appreciates everybody's prayers and concerns about her daughter, who went through a tough pregnancy and been in the hospital for a while. She may be released today and the baby may be released hopefully by the end of the week. So, let's keep her in our prayers. And Lorraine said she wants to thank everybody for, you know, reaching out to her and her daughter. But the good news is, they're both recovering and they're going to be fine, but it's, you know, an uphill battle. And Tony Riccio is on vacation. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up public participation. So, anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything publicly? Anybody on this side of the room? Go to the podium, say your name and address, Joe. Just for the record.
Joe Ventreska, residence is forty-sixth East Second Street, Moorestown, New Jersey. I'm here with the, to bring up the speed on the project at one hundred mill, building Radcliffe. Got a buzz out there about taking over the grass in front of the property. When I tried to buy it, it was owned by the state. We didn't know if Bristol owned it, or the state owned it, or county owned it, we didn't know. So, nobody could do anything with it. I tried to lease it, nothing happened there. I really would like to protect that as grass. And I know there's some desire or need to put tents up there for the festivals, but I think it would just take away so much from the building. And I'm just trying to voice my opinion, I would really hate that to happen. If there's any way possible that something else could be done other than blacktop in that area, or coordinating a layout that would function as both, you know, take care of the tents also, you might need to be expanded.
I don't think it's more the tents than widening. We want to widen that street. Because when you come down the hill, you can't make the right-hand turn when there's cars coming the other way.
See, I didn't know, I didn't know what your reasoning was.
That was the reasoning. And as far as the festivals, I had mentioned that, with our four or five festivals a year, instead of setting up on the riverside like they normally do, set up on this side and you leave the river open, so.
The only concern I have, and it's only four or five or six, I understand, but if you're sitting on your deck and all of a sudden you've got a generator in front of you and a barbecue pit.
I understand.
It just seems like it would be a little, but if there's a coordinated effort to do something, I'm all, whatever we can do to that.
Well, we're definitely, I mean, I don't know how council feels, but we're, you know, moving towards, everybody got in their packet about widening that street, so the grass probably will be gone, probably all of it.
You're going to widen it that much?
Well, we want to do a lane against the river that there's no parking, so then we need two-way traffic. So, I mean, we'll contact you, you know, when the final plans are done, but, I mean, I know there's, I didn't, I'll be honest with you, council seen them before Mr. Dillon, I think, send them to the two council people in that ward? And I don't know if there's anything in our packets. No. So, I really didn't see it yet, but I have no problem if you want to be part of these discussions.
Please, yes.
But, I mean, I really, I mean, I foresee that street making it a lot wider.
I wish I would have known, I would have moved everything back.
I think once the docks went in, Joe, I think the traffic down there, I don't know if you've been down there, it's crazy right now.
I would have known, I mean, it's just.
Look, I understand, but don't forget, you're this far off your property line.
Oh, I know.
So, I mean, you know, you came out to a couple inches from the property line.
That's all we had.
But the borough worked with you on giving, letting you go that far.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Can't really penalize, now, we have an issue, so we can't penalize the borough, but I, look, I understand, you're trying to sell units and you're going to have a road there.
Maybe a coordinated effort, that, you know, there's a balance between widening and taking it all, you know, so maybe there's something that can be done there, just a consideration.
We talked about maybe a sidewalk or something along the decks, you know.
Whatever, whatever we can do would be great, I greatly appreciate it. One other point, there's rumor out there from, and Mr. Dillon knows, we got an email from a lady who works for a construction company, that the word is that we're bankrupt. So, I just want to let everybody know, we're not bankrupt. I have a three-point-six million dollar loan on the first phase, we used two-point-six. The delay has been, I changed architects, then I went and made another change and put elevators into the building, which stopped everything for another three to four months. And then the plans had to get changed, all that stuff. So, and then I changed contractors, just within the last three months. So, the delays have been architectural and construction, and so now I got my guy that's been with me for fifteen, twenty years. I couldn't get him here sooner. He's here, he's been getting his arms around it for the last thirty, sixty days. We're coming out, we're delivering our first units. Hopefully, the end of October, mid-November, we'll deliver our first units. I have another million-one loan for the second phase that I haven't even touched yet. So, I've got another two-and-a-half million dollars in bank financing, sitting there at the bank, and they only let, release money when something's done. So, I've got a lot of stuff that's not done, it's got to get done. We're back on track, just want to let everybody know, we're okay, we're going to be all right. And sorry for the delay, you know, like everybody else. I had six properties, six units sold the first time, so we lost them all because of the delay. So, just to let you know, we're okay, we're going to be fine, and the property's coming out great, we just got to finish it. So, if there's any questions?
I mean, I haven't heard it, but I know financially you don't need to bank money either, so.
Well, that's why it's strange to hear it come from a council, from, like, somewhere in here.
Council?
From in here, yeah.
I don't know if anybody here.
This lady said that, I'm like, so I wanted to come down tonight, just to let you know, guys, we're okay.
I know, I don't know your, but I know financially you can do the property.
I think I'm okay, I think I'm all right.
I think so too.
I think we'll be all right.
Do you have any idea when you anticipate it might be done?
Yesterday, any day, any, no. The first units, the townhomes, we've got two to be able to deliver by the middle of November, so they, two have got to go right away. I've got a third one over there, and I got a bite on a condo. But the restaurant is coming together, all the electrical, plumbing, and HVAC plants just, just getting done now. So, he's going to get started, get the construction going. So, spring, for the restaurant, spring, spring opening, yeah, something like that.
I mean, it's, you know, you're doing an outstanding job, you've got a lot of money tied up, we all understand that.
We're trying.
And if anybody ever mentions a councilman, or mayor, or ma, get their name.
Yeah, please do.
You know, bring them here. Because I could tell you right now, I could speak for myself.
Bristol rumor stuff, get names.
Well, I came here to talk to you, let the air out, let you know that.
I'm telling you, I'm being honest with you about the road. The road, as far as I'm concerned, has to get done.
Never got notified.
Trying to figure out how we don't hurt you.
Never got notified, nothing. All of a sudden, it was a surprise, I'm like, what?
We just talked about it not too long ago, we really, you know.
I know, I know.
We just recently talked.
I know, I got the word, and I'm like, so I'm here, please, let me, let me get involved and try to coordinate some kind of.
Our engineers are coming up with a design, am I right, Amanda?
Mm-hmm.
And when the design's done, we'll send it off to you and.
I'd appreciate that.
You ever want to meet, I'm available.
Thank, I appreciate that, thank you.
And Joe, I just think, I think I can speak for all of council when everybody wants to see your project get done and get.
I know, I know, I'm sorry it's delayed.
No, no, I'm not saying it like that, I'm saying like.
I know.
We want to support you, we want to.
I know. And you've been nothing but great, that's why I'm looking, all of a sudden, I've got a couple bullets coming at me, and I'm like, wait a minute, that's not, that's not the way it's been.
I think Dave hit the nail on the head, you're probably getting information from somebody that's probably just trying to start trouble. That may have been that way through this whole project.
You know, I, when I hear something, I've got to air it out, so I'm, that's why I'm here, airing it out.
I am, I go to the source.
That's it, that's it. Anything else, anything else you guys need from me?
It'll be like Tom Wicks, two weeks.
What's that?
There's money picked, two weeks.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. Well, it's taking a lot longer than that. If there's no questions, thank you.
Good luck.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? That ends public participation. Hi, Bill, I know you want to speak first.
Good evening. I just have a couple announcements for, really, for the benefit of the council and the public. First of all, I'm happy to hear that Joe's, everything's good.
We're not bankrupt.
Everything's good, yep. We spent all our time cheering here, not throwing, not throwing roadblocks up. I want to compliment the council again, I know I've done it a dozen times. The dock project and the pier, talk about a game changer for this town. And everybody likes the docks, but for me, the most special part of it is the pier. Because it allows, I walked out there just yesterday again, and you just see people out there just loving it. They don't have boats, they're just enjoying it, they're fishing, they're soaking up the sun and looking at the boats, and the boats that are coming that are bigger and nicer every day and more crowded. So, it's great, you guys, you kept your shoulder to the wheel for nine years and it really paid off. That is a total game changer for this town, and I congratulate you on that. Now, you know, we had this boom going on, we had the boom, the combination of the docks and the pier and the small business revolution, and it was great. You walk down Mill Street and you see faces you never saw before, people are looking, people are asking questions, people are looking at potential properties, and that's terrific. But I want everybody to know, we're going to have an echo boom now, okay? We're going to have a follow-up. As we said all along, one of the benefits of winning the Small Business Revolution is that we're going to be the subject of an eight-part video series coming out, and when it does, we're going to get a renewal of interest and a renewal of media coverage, and it's going to be great. So, let me fill you in on some things. As of right now, anyone in the room or anyone at home watching after the meeting, don't leave the meeting for this reason, but anyone watching tonight can tune into smallbusinessrevolution.org website, and you can see episode nine of season one. What they did in episode nine of season one, which is a new episode that's just released, is they went back to Wabash a year after, and they interviewed people on the street, they interviewed business owners, and they said, what's it been like in the years since you won the Small Business Revolution? And it's obviously an amazingly positive show, and it foretells what we could look forward to. But what they also, what I also really liked about the show, is that on three different occasions, they said, season two is Bristol Borough, Pennsylvania. So, you're watching a nationally broadcast media release, and they're talking about Bristol Borough, Pennsylvania. So, if you want to watch that, it's smallbusinessrevolution.org, it's been up for a couple of days, you can tune in tonight and watch that. Episode nine of season one. The next thing, this is really big, on Thursday, beginning Thursday, Deluxe has taken out ads in the Philadelphia media market. They're going to be running ninety-second and thirty-second ads about Bristol Borough, about the Small Business Revolution and them winning. So, people in this whole region are going to be seeing them. They also, so there's a trailer, and they're going to be turned into ads. And then the third thing, is that on September twenty-eighth, as most of you know, we've been advertising it, we're going to have a watch party. Deluxe asked us, they said they needed a media event. They needed an event where they can invite the media to, Amanda Brinkman's going to come back again, so we sold some tickets, and we're going to fill a room and we're going to watch this event together, the rolling out of the first, first two episodes of the eight. And that's going to be a lot of fun, and again, there's going to be a lot of media coverage. But I want to encourage everyone in town, it's online, so if you don't have the Hulu network, it doesn't matter. Starting September twenty-eighth, just turn on your computer, go to smallbusinessrevolution.org and watch the first two episodes about Bristol Borough. It's going to be really cool. I saw, you know, some piece, I didn't see anything of the new things coming, but as I said, when I saw episode nine from last year, it's just really exciting to hear Bristol mentioned in that light. The only other thing I want to mention is that the DCED facade program is pretty much done. I mean, the workers, most of, most of the workers have completed their work. No one has gotten paid yet, they haven't submitted all their bills yet and all the paperwork, but we were able to do another twelve properties. So, over the last three years, we did the facades on about twenty-four buildings, and it's noticeable. People walking down the streets, like, why, you know, things look like this. So, that's really great. All good, you know, good things feed other good things. I'd like to suggest, you know, when more good things come, we've got the Duop concert, we've got Historic Bristol Day, I'd like to suggest that after Historic Bristol Day, let's get some people in a room, some leaders from town, from private and public sector and in the government, and let's debrief what we just experienced over the last several months and prepare for next season, prepare for what we do next year, because we have to, at this point, we have to keep up with our success. We have to keep it going, but we also have to manage it. We can't, we can't miss this opportunity, we have to build on it. That's it.
I just want to say, Saturday, when I came down Mill Street, it reminded me of forty years ago, when Mill Street was booming. There were so many people walking on both sides of the street, and you really, you know, you're, I'm involved in this since the last sixteen years, trying to make an impact in town, and some council members have been here a long time with me, and some new ones that have the same vision. You really like, you don't get a chance to really absorb what you have accomplished, and to see the people down there and the people coming up, and the, every slip was filled at the docks, you know, and it started, you know, sixteen years ago.
Yep.
And it's been a long, long journey, and a lot of naysayers and a lot of, but, you know, when you really think about the impact you have left this town, I mean, it makes you feel good, it really does. I mean, I'm, I'm just, the docks are over the top. I talked to Bruce the other day and said the same thing. I said, we need to meet in November, December, after our budget, get a group, and I told Michael this, get a group of people together and really see, you know, what didn't work and how do we improve on next year. But even the guys working at the crossing guards, working there, everything's just been.
That was, that was a great idea, because they were already affiliated with the borough, they knew how to take, you know, instructions, and I think they did a terrific, terrific job.
And everything, thank you for all your help, because I know, you know, it's just, we can't do it alone, and I've been saying that a long time. We need help, and everybody's working on, we're hitting on all cylinders right now.
And we shouldn't just debrief the docks, we should debrief our festivals, our special events, everything. How do we manage this stuff? How do we move forward? How do we make ourselves?
The business association.
How do we make ourselves as business-friendly as we can? Because now, you don't want to be slamming the door on people and they finally come forward and say, all right, we've been waiting twenty years for somebody to invest in town when they come.
Right.
Let's see how we can be as business friendly as we can.
And we take our grass strip away.
Pardon?
We take. Right, Joe?
Anyway, thank you, congratulations, you guys are doing a great job.
Michael, you got one minute?
Sure.
We got somebody from the Friends of Delaware, Susan Teller.
Sure.
Susan, I don't want to hold you up any longer.
Chairman.
The chairman of the Friends of Delaware Canal.
When I was here last, we talked about replacing the very deteriorated sign panels on the interpretive signs on the canal trail. I'm pleased to tell you that the funding seems to all be coming together. The Bristol Cultural and Historic Foundation committed five hundred dollars to the project, which is wonderful, and they'll be helping with the development of the revisions to the signs. Two hundred and fifty dollars will come from the Canal Festival proceeds, and the Grundy Foundation has told us to proceed with the application, and as has the Bucks County Conference and Visitors Bureau. So, that cost is in hand, without help, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had on our agenda this evening to vote on this.
What I'm coming here tonight to tell you about and ask you is whether Bristol Borough will formally designate that you are the owners of the signs, as I stated in my letter back in the nineteen ninety-nine document from DePaulo Associates, it states the borough, and DCNR are the owners. DCNR has never taken any ownership of any signs. And the Grundy Foundation, in its wisdom, brought up the fact that we really should be looking toward a plan to maintain and replace the signs as needed. The signs are twenty years old, all the bases are good, which is wonderful, because they're the really expensive part of the system, and not to get to the point where we are now, where you can't read the signs and graffiti isn't removed, et cetera. The borough seems to be the entity that has the most presence as owner, the infrastructure to deal with maintenance and replacement. In my letter, I put out, you know, a suggested maintenance schedule, where perhaps your public workspeople could go and expect maybe twice a year, just to see what's up and provide any input as to what panels may have been graffitied, et cetera. And if indeed the bases need to be replaced, I let you know how much those bases would cost if they had to be replaced. But they're looking good. It's very pleasant to look at those and say, hey, they're in good shape. So, in order to fill in our application to the Grundy Foundation, I, if you can tonight to give me some sense of whether you're willing to enter into that kind of understanding.
It's on our agenda to vote on this evening.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
And in our promos, Bill, Bill and I have been working on a variety of things. At the Center for the Arts in October will be a show called Views of the Delaware Canal. The opening is on October fifth, it'll run through October twenty-ninth, and I think the entries are coming in.
They are.
Good. So, and that show will be the highlight of an event that Friends of the Delaware Canal have each year called Faces and Places. Bristol is our southernmost destination so far. This year, we will be touring the Grundy Museum, Canal Works, Dad's House, and the Wharf area, highlighting the pier and the Riverfront Park, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm hoping to have Denise Smith do the Bristol song.
Shiva.
Yeah. And then, all that's followed up with a party catered by the King George at the Center for the Arts. So, that's on our website, and we used, let me see the picture, on our invitation, the picture back right there of the tide lock, which is actually labeled incorrectly, whoever that postcard maker. It froze off the whole numbering on the entire canal. So, we're glad to be able to do that event here in Bristol, we hope you'll come. And my, I can't express my thanks enough, the people with whom we're working in Bristol have been just amazingly cooperative in trying to put all the pieces in place, down to the library, opening up so that the tour goers can go to the bathroom in the library. So, it's been an amazingly pleasant experience, and we're excited about the tour and the art show, and all is good, especially if you vote yes.
Thank you.
Michael.
I put together a board based on our, at the last meeting, I had mentioned the possibility of, I'm sorry, Michael Gorman, three-twenty-four Radcliffe.
You want me to put it up here, Michael?
Is that okay, whatever?
Yeah, that's fine.
Would that be okay? Can I come up there?
You can come here, let me give, grab you a mic.
And then, when we get, real quick, thank you.
Yes.
I do have a, an easel as well. So, basically, when I was here last, I had asked a question, why at Mulberry Street, why there wasn't access? People had been asking. Long story short, we found out that it is public area, there was a sign, the sign is no longer there. The thought was, you know, with us, our biggest asset is our river, and that's what people are saying, why can't we access this? So, the thought is, given overall view on, this is the actual tax map, this area here is the area we're talking about. Just thought, with input from people and things like that, we thought perhaps we can name it. Looking back, it used to be a wharf, so it's, we would call it the Wharf Walkway at Mulberry. What this will become is strictly a pedestrian walkway, for pedestrians only, to access, to walk down there and be able to reach a destination where there'll be an observation area where they could view the river. We're not looking for boats or anything like that, just an extension of the walkway down to that. So, with that in mind, looking at the site plan, there's currently a large box that's there. I think it's electrical or some kind of transformer.
Oh, red lights.
Right. And then the two red lights that are there, we had talked before, that there's so many large poles there, and at that intersection, it's not an intersection, it's really just a T, perhaps like all the other streets, that maybe it could just have a stop sign there, and maybe some of those, there's many poles there, could be utilized in other areas, like Market Street or whichever. But if not, even if they were to stay there, the two red lights, it's overdone, I think, with red lights, but I'm not, that's not for me to say or judge, but the two that are also on either side of that transformer, perhaps they could be changed to our lanterns, raising the bar, we'd put the hanging baskets and make that part of the watering process. And then, on either side, we would, we put it, I'm suggesting to put a decorative fence like we did down at the Mill Street Crossing, across the front, to prevent any vehicles from going down there for safety. Put that across the front, have an opening on the right, an opening on the left. As you can see, you would, it would funnel the people around, they would walk down the pavers to an open space with another suggestion of a gate fencing across the front. It's a hairpin, it has the fleur-de-lis in it, it sort of does relate to what's going on in town and what was there years ago, I looked at that, and that seems to be the common design. This, in fact, would be aluminum, so it's maintenance-free, powder-thirty. And then a sample of the, our beautiful lamppost with the hanging baskets, the pavers, this is showing the view now, you can see there's two red lights here, there's a red light at the top, there's a red light on the right, there's so many, so perhaps they could be, and we can, you know, have a little archway or something that calls, or an entrance that says walkway. But again, it's not to be confused with anything except the fact that would be for pedestrians only, to access the waterfront. Walk down the path that would be lit with additional lampposts, down to an observation area where they could stand there and look up or down across the river.
Sounds nice.
Okay, thank you. And if we proceed, you know, this is the beginning of that, working with whoever, just wanted to get something started, and then if that's the case, we would.
Well, like Bill said, we like to have all this stuff done and in place for next year.
Um, you know, the, I worked with, besides designers, I worked with Pope's, Kathy and Roy Pope, they did all the, donated all their time to do the aerial views.
Great.
And on another positive note with the Wharf, the lines, we had a record-breaking year, I mean, so just on that note, we're.
And you had mentioned about moving the electric, so I guess.
Oh, no, that could stay right there.
I'm talking about here, the streetlights.
Yes, maybe we could utilize them down at the Market Street, because that's become like, unless you live here, you know, no one's stopping anymore. Because again, when you go down Mulberry, you just get there, and you can go where your left is, there's no.
Right, and you said about fixing the curbs or the park.
Oh, but that's the other thing, by fixing the curb there, we would add three more parking spaces for Radcliffe Street, which would be an asset. And the other, I'm sorry, and the plantings that are here that we, we suggest to add, I thought it'd be nice to put Mulberry bushes.
Does anyone have any questions for Michael about this?
You piqued my interest in that, and I, I asked an older friend of mine about river access, and just for general information, you know that every street in Bristol Design had access to a river.
Yes.
And Herb can tell you why, right, Herb? You know why every street down there on Radcliffe had access to a river? Yeah, that was kind of interesting. It was for firemen, for fires. It was for firemen, for fires.
To get to water.
And, yeah, to get to the water for the fire truck to put out the fires. And on a minor note, it was for people like living in the north who were to have access to the river. But the main reason was for the fire, not the fire companies.
You know, and hopefully this is the beginning, we'll just throw it up Radcliffe.
Ralph, can I add something? The National Parks Service came here in the 1980s, the Department of Interior, did a study for us, and the study proposed this kind of thing, river access at every spot. So we're getting to it.
Yeah, and that's, that's our asset, the rivers though.
Well, these are the things I'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to have all these things done by next year. Michael, where's the, I thought you still had a microphone.
Thank you.
All right. Herbie.
Just two things. One is, we just recently had 25 firefighters attend the Fish and Game Commission Water Rescue Awareness Program, which was very interesting in, in terms of how to conduct safely water rescues, because we had talked about getting some additional training with the docs in the Wharf there. And then the second thing, I want to thank council for their continued support in the, the fire prevention program, especially where we've gotten grants. This is our fourth fire prevention grant. We'll have, we'll have been able to provide the town with 2,500 carbon monoxide alarms through the programs, and 2,500 smoke alarms, and we basically got $95,000 for these programs from the federal government at a cost of $5,000 to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Herbie? Thank you, sir. See you, Joe.
I'm sorry, I, I do. Herbie, were you the one that submitted the ordinance about the parking?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want to make sure, because I know we were talking about putting that in place. Thank you.
Anybody want to discuss that parking, or?
Well, he might want to explain to us.
Yeah, we've had a, actually went back like 30 years, I found a letter from a long time ago where we were trying to get some dedicated parking spaces for the fire company so that when we show up for emergencies, there's some place for the guys to park. And at one point, the borough took out, I believe, two or three meters, painted the sidewalk for us, put signs up for us, but it was never backed up by an ordinance. And so, and within the last year, we had, somebody got a parking ticket, they went to District Justice, and then the District Justice threw the ticket out because there was no, no ordinance to back it up. So I looked at three parts, three spaces on Wood Street, which goes from the firehouse, about 65 feet towards Mill Street. The other thing I found out is that all of the parking on the north side of Wood Street there, where there's probably five to eight parking cars there continually, that's all illegal. And so our, the fire company's suggestion is to give us those spaces and then to make parking on the north side of the street legal, so that there would be some additional legal spaces for the, the residents and the businesses, and we would have three dedicated spaces for the fire company.
All right. Joe.
Herbie and I have talked about this a couple of times and got together with the councilwoman to talk about this, because it's, it's been a challenge for them, and we can't write tickets because it's, that street and those parking spaces are not in the borough ordinance. So the borough can see its way clear, you know, these guys have to be able to get into the fire station. If they can't park, that delays them all the time with the number of calls that they're responding to each month, not only fire calls, but they're, you know, our emergency medical people who respond along with the squad. So if they got to run around and look for a parking spot, just delays them in responding to emergency. The council can do something with that. I think it's a pretty easy fix as far as procedure-wise, it's just a matter of listing that street, that side of the street, how many parking spots in the ordinance. And I've talked to Chief Henry, same thing came back, if it's not in the ordinance, they're just going to throw the tickets out, there's nothing to stand on.
Billy, did you vote on the ordinance Stephanie gave us?
I did. I looked at the current ordinance, I looked at what Herbie proposed. So I'll be drafting up something for consideration for next month.
Okay.
I just, I'm wondering why the north side is restricted. As far as you're getting your trucks in and out, is the restriction of parking directly across the firehouse enough?
Yeah, there's, there's actually a sign there, and I indicated on a photo that I sent to Mr. Dillon, from that sign to Mill Street, if they made that legal parking on the north side, we would be okay with that.
So we're saying we're going to free up some spots for the public?
Well, I mean, there's cars parked there every day, so.
That's right.
And we're able to get the truck up the street without a problem.
And on the south side, you're looking for 65 feet restricted to firemen only?
Right. That would be three parking spaces.
Okay.
And is there, is there, on Market Street across from the Quaker, the Friends Meeting House, there is firefighter reserves parking there, right?
There's some spaces there also. That's where we usually keep our medical car. So that leaves actually the space that's there, the medical car, and there's actually one other space that might be available.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Why wouldn't we put the spaces on Market Street?
People that come to the firehouse in all different.
The residences there.
We have people that come to the firehouse from all different directions. People that are coming down Mill Street to go up Wood Street to get to the firehouse, if there's no parking there, they're out of luck, they get to the end of the street, and now they're turning on the Market Street, there's no parking. And a lot of times going past Market up Wood, there's no parking in that area. It's just congested.
You know, parking for the residents that are there, and I'll be upfront, I own, you know, I'm involved with partnership, I own the buildings, it's always been an issue because sometimes those parking places remain empty all day long and sometimes all night long. You've got residents that have to basically park because they can't park on, on the Friends side because it's fire company's spots.
Yeah, there's only really one spot.
There's no parking on, well, wouldn't it help if we gave them more spots on that side?
If you, perhaps if you split it. Like I said, we have people that come to the firehouse up Wood Street, and if they come up Wood Street, and it's, it's pretty frequent that in the evening they come up Wood Street, there are no parking spaces.
Right. But if we had spaces on Market Street, they just get used to going down.
Well, that, I mean, again, that's, again, we're, we're running them on a detour that, that delays.
Even more time.
We're, we're running a lot of medical emergencies, a lot of those. We'll be over 300 by the end of the year, just medical calls.
So just so I understand, so the purpose of these spots is for your firefighters, when they're on their way in, to be able to park?
To have a parking space without having to look for.
Get out, get in the fire engine.
Right.
And they currently, you currently have how many spots?
We don't have any.
Well, you have the ones on Market Street, you said, right?
No, there's, well, that's the same, actually, there's no ordinance that backs up the parking spaces on Market Street either.
So people park there, so when they come, even if there's something there, there's no, they can't park?
There's even signage there, it says no parking, volunteer firemen.
And there's no ordinance, and we can't cite them because if we do, it doesn't matter.
No, no, I get that. So we're, we would reinforce or enforce the current signage, but are we, are we talking about more? That's what I'm just curious about. We're talking about more spots.
How many spots right now are blocked, blanked off?
How many? There, there would be, I guess, a total of four.
No, right now, there's four that, there's no ordinance, but it's painted yellow.
Right, but we don't, the, the, the actual, the area that's painted yellow on Wood Street is actually about two and a half cars. It's not three cars.
We need to look at it and reevaluate it.
So is there anything on the agenda tonight for this, or is this on your?
No, it's not. Billy's got it.
So it's something we can discuss and talk about next month?
Yes.
Is that okay, Herbie?
Anybody wants to go, you know, come over?
I'm saying, okay, somebody wants to go there, and we don't need to decide tonight, that's what I'm saying. I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything for Herbie? Chief?
We had some extra officers in, we got the school opening, it went very smoothly. Appreciate the public's cooperation. We, and also just wanted to comment, as has been said several times, the increased crowds on Mill Street, the festivals, did give us a call volume, a little bit of bump, but nothing too be concerned about. And there's several points I'm going to let the mayor expand upon during his report.
For the chief?
I, I just wanted to, to compliment the chief and again, the borough police. I mean, we've got a lot of challenges in town, we know we're all trying to work on together, but when it comes to those festivals that are as big as any of us I've seen, at least in my lifetime, I mean, in the la, just this summer, they've been bigger than ever, any of, I've seen. And the police are just extremely professional, extremely personable, you know, the kids are interacting with them, and, you know, they're dealing with some, I would, correct me if I'm wrong, mostly minor issues, and I think they're dealing with them very well, and I think it really paints our borough in a really positive light when people are coming into town, seeing these great festivals, and then also seeing that presence. So I just wanted to compliment you guys on that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have the pleasure of taking my grandson to school this year, and one of the crossing guards on Beaver Street mentioned that they're having a problem when the buses come in the evening or the afternoon. And it looks like on Beaver Street, on the side of the school, it's yellow, but it's not yellow all the way up. Like, it needs to be redone, but I don't know if it's our responsibility or the school district, but she had mentioned that she spoke to an officer, and they said if they would yellow that all the way up, the buses could always come that way and park there instead of behind the skating rink where they're afraid as the kids are getting dropped off that somebody might not be seen and get hurt. Now, I'm just bringing it up because she brought it up to my attention. She said she did speak to an officer, and they were going to look into it, but like I said, I don't know if it's something where the school would go and paint the yellow all the way down. It is yellow, but it's very late, I went and looked.
It's something I'd have, I'd rather be on site and look at.
Okay.
Make an opinion about it here would be, whatever it would be.
Okay. Well, if you want to meet me there any day this week, we can go together and check it out. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else or anything for Tony?
Yeah. Chief, I, I just have, there's some residents near the Beaver Street apartment, that there have been some incidents that have occurred, especially on the weekends, and I was just wondering if we could make sure that we have a patrol that it, especially on the weekends, that we just going through that area so the residents, you know, just feel a little bit more comfortable.
We're aware of it, we've been up there several times, we've made a couple of arrests, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll add what we can.
Okay. Great, I appreciate it. That's it. Okay. The only thing I want to say is, we spoke to the chief about personnel, and it wasn't, it ended up being an executive session to discuss some personnel issues. The other thing is, we are in dire need of crossing guards. If anyone is looking for a job as a crossing guard, part-time, we would like to hire about five or six, 10, whatever the number is, crossing guards. It doesn't cost us anything. It's when people call out, and in the last few weeks, we had several callouts, and school just started, so we really need crossing guards. So if you're interested in a job, contact the borough manager tomorrow so he can get you through all the proper screening and testing that you need to do so we can get you on a substitute list as soon as possible. And since I'm talking, I'll continue, I'll go first this time, usually I go last. I want to thank everybody for putting together First Fridays. It's been an outstanding year for First Friday. The crowds were, I heard, record-breaking crowds. I, I missed a lot of them because I was down the shore, but I did attend, I think, two so far, two this year, and it was an outstanding event, and I even talked to Shay about doing one in October, but she wanted to shoot me. I think it's something like Bill says, things like that we need to discuss. Michael?
Just so you know, with that in mind, about October, we're working on trying to do a, not called First Friday, we didn't want to take it away from Shay, and we expressed this to her, and she said that's fine, that it'd be perhaps like a block, a block.
Like an Oktoberfest.
Like a block, yes.
That's a good one.
Without the, without the.
Oktoberfest.
But yeah, and have like, have entertainment on each block. And have the shops, boat keepers stay open later and like serve like, you know, ginger snaps and cider, things like that. So it is something.
Good idea.
Great. Because October's still a nice month.
It's a great month.
So I like to see what you can work on, that's another thing. The other thing is, I want to thank John Monday for putting 50 years into the Mill Street run. I mean, think about the commitment that he has made and how many children and runners he has met over 50 years, and I want to give him all the credit he deserves for, for doing this for 50 years.
Ralph, if I could interject too, I, I don't have any numbers to back this up, but I was down there on Saturday morning, and it was, it seemed to be bigger than it's been in many, many years. So it wasn't, it's not losing its luster after 50 years. It seemed to be a whole lot of schools that were involved, and it seems they actually picked up a lot of steam over the last couple of years as well.
Eight, eight more schools than they've ever had before.
Really? Well, I know, I talked to Bobby Mulligan, everybody knows he's a runner, and he lost this year the first time.
Oh, boy.
He said they brought ringers in. But he said next year he will be training, it will never happen again. So I told him, don't let us down next year. I talked about personnel, I talked about the crossing guards. The do-up is this Saturday, rain day is Sunday. It's always a great time for people from all over Bucks County to, to come and enjoy a, a great night, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands it starts at five or five o'clock, that, you know, there are going to be some local entertainment. Craig Whitaker, who used to do all the Commonwealth Egan dances, is going to be the emcee, and he's going to do some music, have some dance parties and things like that before it even starts. So it should be a really good night. The other thing is, we had a response to Lorraine's letter that Jim sent to the school board regarding basketball courts at Buckley Street, and we were interested in working with them. They did respond, they're available on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. The managers informed me that Wednesday would be better for him, so starting the week of the 20th, which is next Wednesday until the 25th of October, that we will be available to meet with them any Wednesday they want, and I'll form a committee of, I know Lorraine definitely wants to be on, and Betty, so I'll, I'll pick somebody else and to meet with the school board.
I know, Mr. Ricky, I would love to be on that board, I'm a big basketball fan, so.
Really? I thought Tony was.
If that's possible.
Well, I have a question about that, Ralph. I was going to hear when you guys talked about, is there, what is the reason we'll be moving, we would want to move the basketball course from that, I mean, it's a great central location, right in the middle of town.
We didn't say we want to move.
No, we're not moving.
Oh, the way I read it, I thought it was, we were moving that, it was a better location, is what I read in the.
Want to put something down there.
Oh, okay.
I think that would be, work with the school board, because originally there were supposed to be basketball courts put in at the school.
Okay.
And they never did, so I said maybe, let's put, if we could do something really nice, we don't need the ones on Jefferson Avenue, but nobody's looking to rip them out, but maybe put something down there, everybody's talking about basketball courts, and see what we can do. So, that's about all I have. The do-up, like I said, it's a good event. Show up this year and enjoy yourself, and Sunday is the rain day. So Betty, I'll go to you next, and we'll go around this way.
Well, I don't have too much. I've, I really wanted to congratulate Tiffany, Lorraine's daughter, on having a new baby and right now struggling with what's going on, and I, I wished them all the luck and hope that, you know, she goes home soon with her new baby. I wanted to thank Paul Goslin, Larry Monte, Bill Burnett, and John Burnett for cleaning up the bridge on Bass Street. It's such a difference when these guys come out and clean it for us. They did a great job, and I, I'm just so happy that every time we ask, they come and do it. Luke Oil, we're seeing Luke Oil doesn't have 50 cars out there anymore, but the four or five that they do are on flats, have broken windshields. If we could send them a letter, I don't think they're allowed to have vehicles on the property like that, and they also have a lot of weeds on their sidewalk that need to be cleaned up. That's like one of the gateways to Bristol, and it looks horrible most of the time. In my packet, I got this Grundy Arena monthly report. I don't know if everybody got one, I hope they did. I just think this is great, the way it's put together. I don't know if anybody's had the time, but sometimes on the weekends when you go by there and they're starting out their season, there's a lot of activity going on over there, and I think it's great that all this is happening on top of everything else that's happening in the borough. We all say the festivals, certain festivals were bigger than they ever were, I do believe that. Puerto Rican Day was huge, we've never was huge. Um, we've never had so many people. It poured and people were still dancing by King George. It didn't matter. So, I just think it's great. Um, and I, I really like this. I think we should advertise it on, I don't know if we do on TV, what's going on at the Grundy most of the time? Do we do advertise on the TV what's going on like?
Uh, we, from time to time.
Okay. But, um, everything that's going on there seems to be pretty positive as in this town. And thank you to the chief. I had the pleasure of talking to him tonight and I will meet this week to, I can show you what they told me, but other than that, you know, that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Is that it? Uh, Louis?
Uh, first thing I'd like to mention is, uh, the Ancient Order of Hibernians is having their fifth annual Teen Jean Horseshoe Tournament on Saturday, September 16th. Registration starts at 10:00 AM and the tournament begins at 11:00. It costs us $35 for players and $15 for spectators, which includes food and, and drink. And, uh, as you know, they, they do this in honor of Jean Shapcott, uh, my niece who passed away 2013 and, and they've been nice enough to do this every year and they put the proceeds towards the, um, Jean May Shapcott Scholarship, which funds, uh, which funds scholarships for Bristol Bar students and also Quitztown University students. Uh, I want to thank council for allowing me to work on the, uh, getting the A.J. Mirwalt, uh, coordinated. That's the New Jersey Tall Ship and, uh, I want to thank Joanna Schneider who really, uh, she was the driving force in this and she's been working on it for a long time. She's been keeping in touch with them ever since we were talking, you know, ever since the dock started. And I also wanted to thank the Rotary Club of Bristol for, uh, sponsoring that. They, uh, they funded the, um, advertisement and refreshments and some of the planning we had for the, um, for the crew and, uh, unfortunately they, we were going to go out with council, uh, on a maiden, maiden voyage, but the, uh, the hurricane superseded that trip. So, um, they still want to do it later on, but we're shooting for the spring when it's a little warmer. Um, I want to thank Mr. Dylan and Merle Winslow, George Walton and Clu, the crew and all the dock security. Um, they're all involved in making this a, a very successful event.
Louis, I'm having a hard time here again.
I'm sorry. Um, I, um, I just got an email earlier this evening from Joanna and she mentioned that the, she had talked to Captain Jesse and Ally Place and the crew. They were thrilled with their stay here in Bristol and they're looking forward to, uh, to coming back. Um, so it was a, it was a good event and for those who didn't see it, the Mirwalt is an oyster schooner that's owned by the state of New Jersey. It was rebuilt and it's a teaching, it's a teaching vessel. All the crew was volunteer, well, I, the exception of, I guess, the captain. Um, the crew was all volunteer, but they did, uh, a lot of free tours over their stay here and if you recall, we had some questionable, you know, it was.
Louis, excuse me one minute. Can you ask Matt, we're getting taxes saying there's no sound on Comcast. Michael, can you let, he's back in that video room?
Okay.
I don't know. Is your mic linked in though?
Yeah.
Give me down.
Now I'm getting that. It's good now. Yeah.
He's still walking.
Okay, yeah, I just got a text.
It's like a delay now. They're about like 20 seconds behind us. Don't know what, but we didn't, nothing happened at all. So, just keep going. Everything he said and he heard, right? Uh, yeah, it took 20 seconds to find.
And Luis is back.
Thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate what everyone said. Italian Day was fantastic. First Fridays, I went down there and I, I would say I didn't know 80% of the people there and for me not to, I mean, not, not even recognize anybody. So, there's a lot of people who are coming in for these events from out of town and they're very positive about it. Um, the Mill Street Run has 50 years. I mean, it's the, I guess it's the oldest local run out there and John Monday did that and he started as a 20-year-old coordinating this and has done it ever, ever since. So, um, and one other thing I'd like to mention is Lower Bucks Campus of the, uh, Bucks County Community College, they had their 10th anniversary, uh, Friday night and they honored, uh, four people, three of who have strong Bristol connections. The fourth one is a, uh, James Hewer, who was a guidance counselor at Truman High School. But, the Bristol connection was, they honored Rosemarie Field Strappoli, Rodney Miller, photographer and artist, uh, for Center for the, for the arts and, uh, our own Bill Pezza. So, it was really, uh, it was a very nice event and, uh, and there, the buzz there even from people from outside of the area was Bristol's docks and Bristol's small business revolution and it was, we were the buzz of the, uh, of, of the event. So, like Phil mentioned before, we just want to keep the momentum going and it's, uh, it's, you know, I talked to boaters. Everybody loves, everybody loves the docks. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Dave.
Good to know. Thank you.
Right. Um, uh, just a few things. Um, I, all the positivity I, I agree with. I think I've interjected enough in the, in those times. So, very happy with the, the last couple of weeks in town. Um, just a few questions. Um, to the dock workers, um, the guys, you know, the, the guys and girls that are crossing guards. I know they're wearing red shirts to identify themselves as more or less, uh, representatives of, of our town. I'm wondering if we can buck up a couple, couple extra bucks and get them something a little more official.
We're supposed to have official. We're still trying to get this resolved.
Okay. All right. I've just been out there a few times and they're all very positive. They're very happy with what's going on. They've just said a few times, it's kind of hard to get people to believe them that they're not some wacko just walking up to them being like, you can't do that. Um, Dave Critisco painted a, uh, little fake badge on his, uh, on his T-shirt. So, I, he was, I think he had a good time with it, but, um, yeah. So, I was just hoping we could, we could get them that, something that, uh, official. Um, I know we've discussed this as well and I wasn't here last meeting, so I apologize, but trash cans on the pier itself. I know there's some, some things we need to weigh about whether we should do that or not. I know it's a, it's a burden obviously on whoever's got to pick it up, but I, I'm just wondering what we think about what's, you know, the scale of trash compared to the burden of picking it up.
I think there are all the things like, if you go down there and you talk to the, the guards.
Yes.
They need a locker.
Sure.
They need trash cans. They need first, I mean, and a lot of their stuff is legit.
Right.
Uh, you know, Jim got them a table with an umbrella because of the dead son. So, I think all these things need to be discussed at the committee that I'm going to form and see, you know, how we're going to handle a lot of this.
Okay. Um, all right. And then, last two things. Uh, one, Mr. Dylan, the grass at Mill Run, if we could just reach out and let them know that, uh, grass at Mill Run needs to be cut. Um, and then the other is that the Mill Run project plan is, is coming along well. Um, you know, there are some obviously questions about traffic patterns and things of that sort and I think, uh, you know, I think we're coming to a place where both parties are feeling more comfortable with, with the plan moving forward. Um, so, we're keeping an eye on that. It's still moving forward and, uh, I think we're actually going to be hearing from the Mill Run, um, project itself soon. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, just a few things. Um, Jim, the grass and weeds that run, run along, I know you took a ride with Mr. Dylan. I don't know what you guys talked about, but hopefully this is one of them, but the grass and the weeds that run along the track. So, we were going to get fences on both sides of the, uh, on the tracks. That never wound up happening. So, now the one side is stuck with this fencing and it still looks like garbage. So, I see some of the residents that are out there doing the cutting and, and to me, it just seems, it seems so silly that you have residents going over there cutting it when our borough workers can just hit it one day, just run a street, you know, a line from the top of Porson Street all the way down to the, you know, to the baseball fields and just be able to hit it and get it done. So, it's something nice where, you know, if, if you're coming along and you're going that area and a lot of people are at the baseball field, then it looks, it looks terrible. So, I don't know if we could get, you know, what the manpower would consist of to be able to get our guys to hit that. I know there's other things that we, we do hit that technically doesn't belong to us that we could take care of. You'll come. Um, the other thing, Mr. Dylan, I, I think I've been waiting three months for the, the billing. I asked you for the breakdown for Gilmore and also the breakdown, uh, for the jobs and vendors associated and paid out for the sewer projects. I don't know how you're making out with that, but I, I would like to be able to have something in the next month so I can look at it.
We'll try.
Okay. Well, we've been trying for three months. I think that I'm being.
A lot going on.
I understand there's a lot going on.
It's a sewer authority and we have a lot going on.
Right.
This town.
Okay. I understand, but I'm asking now, this is now four months, going on four months.
I think it's two and a half.
For a simple, it's a simple request and I, I, I think, you know, that I have a right to see it without, you know, have to come in.
On the record, you can come in.
Okay. Well, what you have to do, then you should have said that from day one. You could have came in and looked at it.
Write the dumb request and we'll figure it out.
Well, this is the problem that I had. I knew this was going to go that way. Instead of being, you know, fourth time, just give me the information. Could have said that from day one, which I knew you were stringing me along, which I'm not happy about.
Stringing.
Now, of course you are. Of course you are. Yeah. So, now, four months later, now you're going to tell me you go fill a write to know out. That's going to be another three months. And it's, it, to me, as a councilperson, asking for information, I think I have a right to know, not have to fill out a write to know.
Everybody has a right to.
Yeah, they do. Well, I, I would like to be able to have the information presented to me in a timely fashion so I don't have to fill out a write to know.
You get, you, you get the monthly treasures report. Most of that information's already.
Okay. Mostly, I want the breakdown of everything. I want to know where these vendors are, who, who they're buying.
Well, I have staff that give you everything that you want in, in the timely manner that you want. So, I'm working on it.
Okay, a timely manner.
We'll get it.
A timely manner, I understand, is a month, a month and a half. I, I think that I've been, you know, very cordial, been waiting four months to get, you know, information that shouldn't take that long.
It's two and a half months.
Well, by the time I get it, I was looking into the future. Yeah. Um, I had somebody also talk about the trash cans down at the Wharf, which Mr. Pezza covered. Uh, the other question I have is, I guess this is for the chief, is that we have graffiti on the underpass on Jefferson Avenue going to the baseball field. It's like, I would say like almost every other month that we're dealing with that. Are those cameras, can, are we, do we have the ability to move those cameras to different spots if we?
Well, let's first of all think about what you're just saying. If we have surveillance cameras and just tell everybody where we're pointing them, would it really be too smart? I mean, we're glad to discuss the issues now. Right now, the case stationary cameras right now aren't stationary. So, but if you want to talk about something that, no problem, you know, outside the public.
Yeah, I should have thought about that. No, you're correct. But, I was just wondering if those cameras were able, I, I'm assuming they're not able to get anything where they're at.
No, they're mostly stationary. Very few of Pete, what they call PTZ, pimp, uh, hand tilt zoom. Uh, it's, it's, it's also underneath the, underpass. And I'll be very, very frank with you. Over the years and my experience, any graffiti artist is very good at holding a hooded sweatshirt and a bandana over their face. And we actually, we had an incident down on Mill Street several weeks ago, uh, we made an arrest on and we, uh, I, when I interviewed the guy, it took him literally, he said about 30 seconds because these tigers are that.
Yeah, yeah. These aren't very good. Yeah.
But, you know, we can look at that if you don't.
No, I'm just wondering because that, I mean, it's every other month. That's what I'd like to, um. And then the last one, Mr. Dylan, it's something that we talked about before. It, it's trash cans along, uh, Beaver Street where we have some of the, uh, some of the stores. We got the barber shops. I got the, the other tattoo parlor. Just that there's trash, you know, there's people coming off the, off the trains, going to wherever they're going. I would like to just be able to have another, uh, receptacle there at some point from the train station to burger thing. You know what I mean? Maybe one or two more receptacles. What are the, what are the possibilities? We can look into that.
I'll look into it. Look at it. Look into that.
That's it. That's all I have.
Joe? I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to, with the Amtrak station, what we're talking about there, up on the, going towards Philadelphia, the fence there is zip-tied with plastic zip ties rather than the, it's a cyclone fence. They have plastic zip ties and now the, you know, once somebody cuts a few of them away, now there's sections of it that are, you know, are no longer secured against the rail. I don't know. Who do we talk to? Do we talk to Amtrak? Do they set it or?
That one particular spot could be set. Uh, we'll check it.
I think it's really a safety, it's a safety issue and I, you know, I think if we can contact them and get them to come in there and tie it up, probably deliver fence ties rather than plastic zip ties.
We, we never, we never had.
I'm surprised Shane got. That they put that fence up. That's the sad part. You know, I mean, there was no way to stop it. They had the property, but it created a total nightmare there.
So, this is up on the waiting area. I'm not talking about.
Gardish. It's just.
Yeah.
Screw street. It's terrible. We've been fighting and believe me, we've been fighting.
Joe?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Uh, just to reiterate kind of what a lot of people said tonight about thanking Alliance Club for the 34th anniversary of their Italian Day. It surely is, I think it's the culmination. Everybody looks towards the end of the summer festival. Also too, they've been doing those concerts for 45 years every Sunday. You know, and it's, you know, they do a yeoman's job in, in providing that for the people in our town. We get quite a few out of town and now we get some boaters who can, uh, pull in and listen to it. Um, as Ralph said, with John Monday, uh, for organizing for 50 years and, and keeping the run going. Uh, Bobby Mulligan, I talked to him right after the race. He, he thought he was going to come in first, but I think he ended up third. So, it wasn't too bad for Bobby. Not bad for a 64-year-old guy. Um, again, just plugging Bristol Day, Historic Bristol Days, October 21st. Uh, Police Chief Henry and I attended a, uh, one-day seminar, uh, earlier this month, uh, from the Pennsylvania State Boroughs Association, uh, dealing with the borough code updates on police civil service. It was a, an excellent, uh, program that we attended. We got a lot of information. Also, want to thank the chief and all the officers, uh, who have embraced our increased focus on community policing. You know, I hear a lot of feedback, not only from the general public, but from council members who are noticing our police officers are out there more, whether it's on the bikes, during the festivals, they're talking to people. That's all part of this community policing program. Uh, part of that also, the police, uh, took an initiative under the chief to meeting with the school kids over the summer program. They enjoyed that quite a bit. Uh, the bike patrols and, and the key piece I think too is that it's the one-on-one that they're doing in talking to our residents and other people out there. So, I want to thank them for all that. Um, also too, Sergeant Fay conducted the annual, uh, training with all our crossing guards prior to school opening. As chief said, school openings went fairly smooth. Additionally, officers were brought in conducting stop sign enforcement around schools. You know, we get complaints not only during the school year, but about people not stopping with those stop signs. So, did a little enforcement out there. Um, I think that's about it. Oh, one more thing. Um, from what I can see, we're still under budget. So, we're moving in the right direction.
Hey, Zappy.
Yeah.
You just smiled.
Good job, Joe.
I, I just.
It's the chief and the.
I have a boy every day of the week for that.
The chief and the officers that make it happen.
I just want to say that since you've been here, there's a major difference. So, I know you see cops, you see different things and.
Right.
So I know you see cops, you see different things, and I appreciate you being on top of this police department, I really do.
I appreciate council with the, you know, working along with what we're trying to do, it's a team effort, so, everybody's going to be a part of it.
Bill, you have anything? No? Jim? No. Before we end, I'm going, I'm going to just go into a voting part of this meeting. Does anybody have anything else? Anybody in the public have anything that they want to speak on? I just, again, want to remind you, the do-up, Saturday night, I want to thank former councilman Anthony Mucy for all his hard work and dedication. They start a week or two after this ends for next year, and him and Adal Rarcy and their, their team really put a lot of time, and you don't realize how many meetings, meeting with different people, and I don't think anybody knows these groups and songs more than Anthony, so, I want to thank him for all his hard work. Okay, so can we just go right into a motion, or do we got to...
I need to adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn.
I want to adjourn the work session. I want to call the regular meeting to order, uh, September 11th. So therefore, we need, all, everybody's done communicating, Joe, you don't need anything else?
I'm good.
All right, so we'll start with item two, is public participation. Anybody want to speak on anything? That ends public participation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council minutes of 8/21/17, except the treasures report for July 2017, except the police and D J's report for August 2017, except the fire chief's report for August of 2017, except the inspection department report for August 2017, except the public works department report for August of 2017, uh, the Harb report and decisions for 8/28/2017.
Second by Mr. Katroci, any questions or comments?
No.
Greg?
No, no, I'm sorry.
The only question I have is, I don't know if any of these Harb was, I was involved in any of it this month, did I abstain from that? I don't even remember, I'm so busy, I don't even know what meeting I'm attending. I'll just abstain from the Harb, uh, report. All those in favor, on everything else?
Aye.
Oppose? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for the 2018 minimum municipal obligation for the uniformed pension plan, the amount of $450,702.78.
Oh, second, second, by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? The only comment I have, Jim, is what is the increase or decrease? It's about the same as last year. About the same? For both of them, about the same. Okay. In the packet, it compares the payments over the last 20 years, you can see the dramatic increases over the last few, few years. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for the 2018 minimum municipal obligation, the non-uniform pension plan, the amount of $402,746.36.
Second by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance for multi-municipal recycling grant application.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to purchase, for the purchase of 1038 Testel Street.
Second by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number eight.
I'd like to authorize payment of $1,595 as boroughs, five percent match with project department not going along with it, totaling $33,500.
Second by Mr. Katroci, questions or comments? All those in favor? Oppose? Number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Friends of Delaware Canal letter dated 8/29/17, and to accept maintenance responsibility of signs by the borough.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We need to add something to the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules.
Oppose? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Go ahead, Betty.
All right, I'd like to add a motion to adopt resolution approving emergency plan update for the borough of Bristol.
So I have a second, second by Mr. Pezza, Merle needed that done, so we needed that added to the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And before we leave, I just want to say one more thing. I attended Greg's new restaurant, and I give everybody credit, but you did an outstanding job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I get a motion to adjourn.